The time is six, uh, eight, seven. I can't read the clock. Seven fourteen. And this regular business meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and his staff. I ask that you turn your cellphones to silent alert if you have not already done so. We appreciate the time you have taken to join us and for your interest in the Waco Independent School District. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence by, as we proceed with the, through our agenda this evening. Thank you. At this time, we'll proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. DeMire?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Tonight, we are pleased to have two students from Kendrick Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in welcoming Damarian Butler and Priscilla Alvera. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Nelson, trustees, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's.
We're, excuse me. If y'all will, please be seated. We are going to alter the agenda this night very slightly. Uh, we're going to move one item up, uh, that we have been in closed session on, and we have concluded deliberations. I'm going to move item nine A, Consider Level Three Parent Complaint Grievance filed under Policy FNG Local, uh, because we do have a lot of recognition to do tonight, so, uh, if there's no objections, I'd like to move nine A up on the agenda. We have concluded deliberations in closed session, and we are back in open session. Does any Board member have a motion regarding the grievance? Hearing none. Thank you for your cooperation. This grievance matter is now concluded.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Teakell.
I, I do have a, I, I would like to make a comment to the, the Danyas, um, and just, I want to compliment this family for, for advocating for their student, and according to the administration, doing so in a very professional, um, polite way. Um, and it was obvious to at least this Board member that, um, these parents care very much about their child and the program. And I, as a Board member, always want to make sure that our, um, parents and students know that our grievance process, um, is there for them, and, um, that in the event there is a complaint that they feel cannot be resolved with the administration, that the Board is here to hear them. Um, so I just wanted to, um, while perhaps the action taken by the Board tonight isn't what was ultimately requested, I do want to just, um, say that to the parents and to the student, and I don't see her, but, um, she was probably here somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teakell. And let me say, I, I do feel that your comments reflect, uh, the feelings and, and, uh, thoughts of the Board as well, so thank you for your comments. At this time, we will proceed to Special Recognition, item seven on the Board, and we'll stand in front of the dais.
We'll begin the Special Recognition portion of our meeting this evening with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend Kendrick Elementary School. Priscilla Alvera is a fifth grader at Kendrick and says math is her favorite subject. In her spare time, she enjoys working with the worship leaders at her church, reading, and playing Fortnite. When she grows, when she grows up, Priscilla wants to be a veterinarian. Priscilla's teacher says that she works incredibly hard and always has a positive attitude. Priscilla's parents, Alejandra and Jonathan Alvera, accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so we can recognize you as well, and thank you for sharing your daughter with us this evening? Damarian Butler is also a fifth grader at Kendrick and says that his favorite subjects in school are math and science. Damarian likes to play football, basketball, and run track, and he also enjoys playing the drums at his church. When he grows up, Damarian wants to be a professional drummer. Damarian's teacher says he is very respectful and is always willing to help others. Damarian is joined this evening by his mother, Atasha Butler. Ms. Butler, would you please stand so we can recognize you and thank you for sharing your son with us as well? Isabel Lizana is the principal of Kendrick Elementary School, and we'd like to also say thank you to our adopt-a-school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble, for donating the books that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. Last year, Dr. Nelson outlined five bold changes as part of a plan to push the district forward. Among them was a focus on differentiated instruction through blended learning. What that means is essentially taking technology to do in a more dramatic and efficient way what great teachers have always done. Vary their lessons for the varying skill levels of students in their class. And this evening, we get to celebrate Bell's Hill Elementary School and their success in doing this, which has recently been recognized by Apple. Bell's Hill Elementary School was selected as an Apple Distinguished School for 2018 through 2021, a three-year designation. Apple Distinguished Schools are described as centers of innovation, leadership, and educational excellence that use Apple products to inspire creativity, collaboration, and critical thinking. Apple Distinguished Schools showcase innovative uses of technology and learning, teaching in the school environment, and they have documented results of academic accomplishment. I'd like to begin by introducing some representatives from Bell's Hill this evening, starting with instructional specialist Stephanie Trowbridge. Assistant Principal Glenna Jenkins. Principal Rebecca Meckel. And also, we're joined by former longtime Bell's Hill Principal Beville Cohn. This evening, we're honored to have two representatives from Apple who are here to officially present the designation to Bell's Hill Elementary School. Please welcome Diane Gunther and Jennifer Spilly. Apple believes that some of the most powerful opportunities for technology are in the hands of educators and learners, and Apple is therefore deeply committed to education. Their goal is to empower every individual, no matter how they learn, to do what they love, and to learn how to expand on that experience. We're honored to have the continued support of Apple in advancing our own mission and preparing our students for future success. If you're a teacher or staff member from Bell's Hill in the audience, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well this evening? And on a more personal note, I'd like to wish Rebecca Meckel a happy birthday, who is joining us here to celebrate her team and her students before she celebrates herself tonight. Happy birthday. It's no secret that we have a host of talented students in Waco ISD, and tonight, we're pleased to recognize a large group of musicians who have used their individual talents paired with hard work and dedication to put on an amazing display of music and precision. University High School's Mighty Trojan Band competed at the UIL Region Eight Marching Contest on Saturday, October 20th. In addition to working hard to put on their best performance at this competition, the performance that they presented was a rendition of Cirque du Soleil's "Ca," a show the band hasn't performed since the fall of 2010. And that show holds special meaning for the band as it was performed in memory of Joseph Crawford Jr., who passed away this past January. Joseph was a member of the UHS class of 2011, a drum major who played tenor saxophone, and the homecoming king at UHS his senior year. He, in fact, dreamed of becoming a band director himself one day. And so, in dedication to him and in honing their craft, the band came together to give a special performance and earn a coveted Division One rating at the regional contest that day. So, please, join me in congratulating the Mighty Trojan Band on their incredible success. We'd like to start tonight by introducing you to our brass section leaders from the Mighty Trojan Band. First, Jesus Barrigan. Augustine James. Giovanni Luna. Noah Per. And Hunter Torres. Next, I'd like to introduce you to the woodwind section leaders. Sebastian Barrigan. Carlos Perez. And Jonathan Saldana. Now that you've met our section leaders, at this time, we'd like to invite all of the other members of the band who are here today to walk across and, and meet the Board and be introduced and recognized as well. The Mighty Trojan Band is led by drum majors Daniela Suarez and Willie Padilla. And the band is under the direction of Directors Arthur Torres, Justin Lindsay, and Archie Hatton IV. Finally, we'd like to recognize Waco ISD's Director of Fine Arts, Larry Carpenter, for his support of the performing arts in our district. Please join me once more in congratulating the entire Mighty Trojan Band on their accomplishments this year. Over the past couple of months, we've been recognizing students who earned a perfect score on their star assessments this past spring, and this month, we're excited to recognize another group of students who also earned this distinction of perfect on their star assessments in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade last year. This evening, we have ten students with us who each received a perfect score on a 2018 star assessment. And beginning with our sixth-grade star mathematics perfect score earners, I'd like to introduce to you from Tennyson Middle School, first, Alexia Hookum. And Juan Medina. With a perfect score on their sixth-grade star reading test, please welcome Tennyson's Andrew Higgins. And Lake Air's Athalie Zuniga. Michael McMullin earned a perfect score on the seventh-grade star math test from Tennyson Elementary School. And up next, with a perfect score on the seventh-grade star reading test, please welcome Carla Solis from Caesar Chavez Middle School. These next students earned a composition score of eight on the seventh-grade star writing test. That's the highest score possible on the composition test, and results in the student's work being designated as accomplished. Please welcome, from Caesar Chavez Middle School, Naomi Flores. Up next, with a perfect score on the eighth-grade star reading test from Tennyson, and now attending Waco High School, Bailey Barton. And finally, in this group, I'd like to introduce you to two students from Tennyson who earned perfect scores on their eighth-grade science test. Please welcome Noah Garner and Serenity Walker, who both attend, or I'm sorry, Noah currently attends Waco High School, and Serenity currently attends University. Congratulations to all of our star students who received perfect scores this past spring. We are wowed by your accomplishment. And if you're a parent or family member of one of these students, would you please stand so that we can thank you for sharing your outstanding students with us and celebrate your success as well? So far this evening, we've recognized innovation at Bell's Hill, outstanding musical talent at University, and incredible academic achievement from across our middle school campuses. Tonight, we'll wrap up our special recognitions by switching gears to athletics. Both Waco High and University High showed great effort and greater success during this year's cross-country season, and tonight, we're proud to recognize those athletes that qualified for regionals, as well as a few other achievements in their sport. First up, I'd like to introduce you, or tell you a little about, two students from Waco High School who competed at the District 12 6A District Championships at the end of October. Waco High sophomore Jonathan Carl was unable to be here this evening, but he finished the season on track to be a force in the district in the coming years, with sixth place at the district competition and a 121st-place finish at the regional meet. Now, with us tonight, please welcome regional qualifier and District 12 6A champion, a junior from Waco High School, Anna Garner. After winning the district title, Anna finished 38th place in the overall standings at regionals and was just 11 places from qualifying for the state meet. As a junior, her coaches are extremely excited about what her senior season will bring. And of course, our Waco High School student athletes wouldn't have had this success without the incredible support and dedication of their coaches, so we would like to recognize head girls' cross-country coach Rachel Moore. And head boys' cross-country coach Jeff Bray. Congratulations again to Jonathan and Anna. Last, but certainly not least, I'm pleased to introduce you the University High Boys' Cross Country Team, who made a bit of history this year at the District 14 5A Championships in October. With their top five runners scoring in the top 20, the team took home, for the first time in the program's history, the team district championship title. Please join me in welcoming, from that UHS champion cross-country team, Isaiah Herrera. Manuel Coronado, who placed 23rd. Jesús Núñez, who placed 20th. Omar Salazar, who placed 16th. Jacob Cassiano, who placed 14th. Kendrick Scott, who placed 8th. And Jaden DeLeon, who placed 6th. We know, of course, that the team's coaches also worked incredibly hard to bring this championship title home to University High School. Please welcome head coach Ricky Perez. Congratulations once more to our district champions. And with that recognition, we conclude the special recognitions for this evening's meeting.
Okay, well, that was quite a impressive group that we had during our recognition time this evening, and certainly congratulate all our students and their parents, and thank them for being with us this evening. It was a wonderful celebration. At this time, we'll proceed to item eight, but I don't know, I don't think there's any guests that were here to address the Board, so we'll proceed to item nine. We've already covered item A. We'll proceed to item B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Revised Lone Star Governance Goals, Progress Measures, Checkpoints, and Presentation Calendar. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, you have, beginning on page three, uh, the background information that we believe will address this agenda item. As you know, we are fervently committed to our Lone Star Governance Model, and this Board has done an outstanding job dating back to 2016 in being a leader in the state of Texas regarding the Lone Star Governance Model. Last month, this Board revised our goals to be more in line with our current accountability system and with our recent student achievement data. And now, we're at a point where we would like to present a summary of the goal changes, along with progress measures and checkpoints, that we believe the Board would find satisfactory to, in terms of presentations that would come to you throughout the year, specifically related to the goals that you approved last month. There is a calendar that shows the various presentations that would occur, and the Lone Star Governance Goal has been modified to include the measures of academic progress assessment, which we call MAPS, to measure literacy progress in grades K1 and 2, which is directly tied to our first Lone Star Governance Goal of reading at, by third grade level. The Board has been supplied with a calendar for governance presentations that will take us into 2019, and what we would like to do is submit these items to you tonight, ask that you review them. We're open to any comments or questions that you may have tonight. Otherwise, we're asking to put this on the consent agenda in December, is our plan. So you're seeing it for the first time tonight, and so we're not really, even though it does allow for action, we're not asking for action tonight. We're asking for it to be on consent in December. Any comments or questions? If not, it'll be on the consent agenda next month.
Okay. Any comments or questions at this time? Okay, thank you, Dr. Nelson. We'll look forward to it next month, then. We'll proceed, at this time, to Item 10, the Consent Agenda. I have been asked to pull Item C and H.
Mr. Dupuis couldn't be here tonight, and so I'm speaking on his behalf, as well as my own, and really, I think at this point, we both felt like we needed to have more information earlier, and were disappointed that we had to continue to ask for information after it was already presented for action. So I think if we could request, we'd just be kept informed about the agreement, about what Gallagher's doing for us throughout the year, and then know sooner, and have more information the next time we're asked to approve the renewal.
Yes, ma'am.
We can proceed to Item H, or we can go ahead and I'll entertain a motion on Item C.
And I move we accept the proposal as presented.
Thank you.
Item C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you, Mr. Cordaway. Any other discussion, any other comments? All those in favor of approving Item C, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item H, Discussion and Possible Action, that's 10H, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Bid Award for Transformation Zone Implementation Grant Partner.
Yes, sir, thank you, that was might as well. Last, a couple weeks ago, I asked the administration for the contract that was being proposed, and I have since learned that there isn't a contract, but rather, it's, at that point, it was a purchase order proposed with a statement of work. And for me, I'm just concerned about the amount of money, and the lack of specificity about the work that's going to be performed, who's going to perform it, and what we get. I noticed there was a, maybe an updated statement of work that was provided today, so I'm not clear on what statement of work we're operating under, since the one I saw today had draft on it. But I'd be curious to know if we get more information from these folks, and in what form, and whether we'll be given more information along the way, were we to approve the contract.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Dr. Nelson. Thank you. I appreciate Mrs. Teekell's inquiry, as a follow-up to last month's comments that she made regarding it. I felt like we had provided the documentation that we provided for the record, is the same documentation we provided for the Transformation Waco Board. So if, there needs to be a higher level of reporting, and monitoring, and making sure that this Board, particularly Trustee Teekell in this instance, has confidence, to have confidence, we can set up a schedule to bring, to bring the, I want to say, the highlights of the Empower Schools' work, and their relationship with our school district. So it's not, you know, the thing, as I speak for Dr. McDermott and I, this is part of our relationship with TEA. So we understand the need to be good stewards of such a significant purchase, but we're confident that we can provide regular updates on their work, in a way that'll meet this Board's expectation, and with all due respect, we know it'll meet TEA's expectations. So, Dr. McDermott, the Chief Executive Officer of Transformation Waco, is here, along with a member of Empower Schools, Ms. Alyssa Schecter. And so, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if that's your, to hear, if you'd like to hear from Transformation Waco, or Empower Schools, it's the will of the Board.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nelson. I might add that, from, and we've covered it before, that the, it's noted in our agenda that the cost of the service will be funded from Transformation Waco Implementation Grant for the two years of the award.
Yes, sir.
So that, it has been provided through the grant process, then. So, okay. All right. Are there any other questions or comments regarding Item H? I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Perez. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor of the motion, is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have one against Ms. Teekell. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're through the consent agenda, and we'll proceed with Item 11. These are items on the Consent Agenda Plan for December 13th, on the Regular Board Meeting. 11A, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve 2018-2019 Incentive Plan on the First Review. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, beginning on Page 103 of our background packet, you'll find the documentation regarding this agenda item. I would like to commend the Office of Curriculum and Construction, construction, Office of Curriculum and Instruction, Curriculum and Instruction, under the direction of Dr. Scott McClanahan, and Mrs. Grace Benson, along with Mrs. Elaine Botelho from Human Resources, as well as our Chief Financial Officer. All have participated in at least a review of this proposal that we're preparing. For purposes of the public, the Board has approved a campus teacher incentive plan for the last five years, directly related to student performance on the state standardized tests. This year, in an effort to align with the state's newest accountability system, A through F, the teacher incentive plan will now include six components to ultimately focus on school improvement. The new incentive plan includes the following components: a campus's ability to raise their overall score, a teacher's ability to raise his or her classroom scores, advanced placement success for the campuses that that's pertinent to, the number of campus distinctions as awarded by the Texas Education Agency, participation in our early literacy assessment plans, and measurements on those student outcomes, and teacher attendance are all criteria in the new incentive plan that we're proposing. It is something that I believe is enticing and encouraging to our teachers, because it finds ways for us to be creative in how we compensate our employees, and we're looking for multiple career paths to allow classroom teachers that are not necessarily interested in pursuing counseling, or administration, or some of the other opportunities we have for advancement, they can still pursue higher levels of compensation while staying in one of our most critical areas, which is, and most important, is teaching in the classroom. So this is an idea, we've ran it by QDAC, they're aware of it, we've ran it by our principals, they've given us feedback on it, and all of that feedback has contributed to the proposal that you have in front of you. You know, on behalf of Ms. Davis and I, we're not exactly sure how pricey this can get, and so we'll have to be creative in how we fund it, but that's usually the case every year on our incentive plan, so we're trying to really support our teachers, and find a way to match the outstanding performance of our teachers, be able to compensate those that are clearly outstanding. So we're, are we asking for approval?
Yes.
Yes, so we're humbly asking for approval this evening, unless the Board would like to take some type of different action. We recommend approval.
Mr. President?
Mr. Manning?
Ms. Davis, in the past, how have we funded this? Have we done this through our balance, or do we use, you try, I know, a lot of times, you try to find funds that are unused.
It actually kind of comes in two pieces, so we have some cash awards to teachers that comes, that we try to pay at convocation, so that will hit the current fiscal year. Usually, that piece, I'm able to cover through salary savings throughout the year. The second piece, which is the bigger piece, is the amount that we'll amend in at the first of next year, that gets awarded to the campuses. And so, because, you know, late in the summer, they can't really spend that money, so we just do that in September for them, and that, that we do amend out of fund balance.
So it really won't have any, even, really any major impact, even on our fund balance?
Not, certainly not in the current year, no.
On this item, we are not posted to take action, this is for discussion only, and it will, it's planned to be on the consent agenda, unless there's an objection from the Board to be on the December 13th Consent Agenda item at the Regular Board Meeting. Okay? All right. We'll proceed now to Item 11B, Discussion and Possible Action, but it looks like, again, this is discussion only, but it will be posted for action at the December 13th meeting. So, 11B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the 2019-2020 Instructional Calendar, First Review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beginning on Page 106 of your packet, you will see a executive summary of the process that Human Resources has coordinated, along with a host of others, to bring this recommendation in the form of a calendar. We went through a lot of conversations with QDAC, campus principals, we visited with neighboring districts. One of the reasons why you have this final version that we're submitting is, in an attempt to align our calendar as much as possible, not identical for the record, but as much as possible, with a couple of our neighboring districts, and really, there's been some negotiations from all the districts to try and come up with a calendar where I believe all of the employees in those districts will be pleased to see an attempt to collaborate. So this is the calendar that we're presenting, we feel very good about it, it is pretty close to the other districts, and we have spoken to QDAC, we did a community survey, and we're recommending approval on the consent agenda, as the Board Chairman presented in his introduction. We can answer any comments or questions, otherwise, we recommend approval in December.
So initially, there were four options, and then there were some revisions to that, additional options were made, to the extent that now the option F, which is now Option F, is the recommended option?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that is in our Board Packet, so, are there any questions? Any comments? Okay, thank you, Dr. Nelson. We'll review that next month, then, for action. Item 12, Reports and Discussions, Presentation and Discussion of Monthly Financial Reports for the period ending October 31, 2018. Ms. Davis?
Since it's still very early in the year, it's only, these reports are as of the end of October, so there's not a lot to talk about. The one area that I would like to point out is in our state revenue, because if you look at our state revenue year-to-date compared to last year year-to-date, we're down about $4.3 million. There's a number of reasons for that. Last year, the state revenues at that point were a little higher than they would normally be, because we had received a little over $400,000 from a property valuation audit that Robert Meyer's firm had submitted for us, and we did receive, like I said, $441,000 back from that, so that was in last year's numbers, which kind of inflated them. We talked during budget development that our state revenues were going to be down because our property value increases were so great. And then, the third thing is that we'd had a settle-up. TEA always settles up your state revenue, or does their first settle-up, anyway, at the end of September. We talked throughout last year, when we did the financial statements, that we were down about $1.4 million in state revenue, so we were overpaid that amount by TEA last year. That was primarily due to two areas. We did lose a lot of students at the elementary level, when Harmony opened up their second charter school, and then, we were down in special ed significantly, about half a million. Now, in projecting the current year right now, we just finished projections for the second six weeks yesterday, and it does look like our special ed, with the change kind of in the state's direction on funding special education, and lifting that cap that we had on identifying special ed students, we have identified significantly more students, and at this time, we are up almost $800,000, or projected to be up almost $800,000 in special ed funding. A lot of that is in our zone campuses, but about $400,000 of that is in our district campuses, so we will be making some adjustments. I've met with special ed last night, and we're going to be bringing an amendment to you in December to put some of those revenues back out into the program, because we will need to spend those by the end of the year.
Questions for Ms. Davis? Mr. Manning?
What's our count, student count, now?
In total? Where's David?
14,810 enrollment.
What about ADA, what is that looking like?
Is that, is that within the, what you projected, for the, are we within, within the parameters that you projected?
Yes. And for regular ed, it's very close. As I said, it's increased in special ed, but for regular ed, yes, we're very close to what we had projected at this point. Of course, it's still early, the early projections, and we're still cleaning up data, but...
But you, you don't expect no, no major increases between now and, and the school year, anyway, right?
No. Like I said, other than in special education, it does look like we're going to have an increase in dollars from, in compensatory education as well. I'm still waiting, kind of, before we roll that money out, but because we did the community eligibility provision, they calculate our compensatory education a little differently, and so, we, it looks like we might have as much as half a million dollar increase in compensatory education with the implementation of that program.
And that's just for general, general funds, right?
Yes.
Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Thank you, Ms. Davis. We'll proceed to Item 12B, Reports on Gifts to Waco ISD. That's, there's a report in the agenda, so if there's any questions?
Any questions on the report?
Okay, thank you. That was for report only. We'll proceed to Item 12C, Presentation and Discussion on Lone Star Governance, Continuous Improvement Including Goal Progresses Measure 3.1, Report on Waco ISD Internships. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so I need to clarify a situation for this Board to just consider, really, we can, we can... Really, we can, we can handle it a couple of different ways. On item, earlier in this meeting, on item nine B, nine basketball. Let the record reflect, that agenda item says discussion and possible action to approve revised Lone Star Governance Goals, Progress Measures, Checkpoints, and Presentation Calendar. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McClanahan, Mrs. Benson, but I believe that when I asked for this to be on consent agenda next, in December, it is not necessary for the goals to be in December because they've seen those goals before. And the reason why we're asking to approve at least the goals and possibly the calendar is because there are purchases that we need to bring in December that technically you're supposed to approve the new goal first. And as I said in earlier, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. McClanahan, but they are seeing the progress measures for the first time tonight.
No, the only thing we changed in the project, progress measures?
The only thing that we changed in the progress measures were that we went from the generic language of the Waco ISD Identified Screener to the, the actual screener that we're going to use. Otherwise, it's exactly the same.
And we've seen that before.
Correct.
So to protect the integrity of board action and board minutes, I would like to request that the board, if it's okay, reconsider taking action on nine B because then it would, it would, it'd be honorable, you really don't, technically, we shouldn't be hearing from Kate, internships unless you've approved the new goals. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. So if the, unless there's an objection from the board, we'll proceed to pull back to item nine B. I think Dr. Nelson and Dr. McClanahan have expressed the, the points to be raised on, clarification for that. So if there's any other discussion, or is there any other discussion or comments on that? We have seen those items before. We have discussed them before. And if the, if the board's ready to proceed, I'll entertain a motion.
So, Ms.?
Thank you, Ms. Teakell. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quarterwig. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any pos? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll proceed with item twelve C. And again, we're still under reports and discussions. That's Goal Progression Measure Three Point One, Report on Waco ISD Internships.
Which is directly related to the new goal that was just approved.
Yes.
Ms. McThethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening. I am looking forward. I have some students to bring you tonight and we want to talk about our internship program that is growing and just really proving to be a valuable asset to our district. So this is, the partnership that we have now is Waco ISD's Korean Technology Department, both Guam and Guaca and their students. In addition, Prosper Waco is also a partner with us. So I'm gonna give you an overview of the internship program, then I'm gonna let some of our interns give you some more information. So first of all, the way the process works, and this is just kind of the brief overview, is we extend to our juniors that will be, you know, juniors of the current year from all our different campuses. They apply online. Then our campuses screen those applications for any student that might have some strong discipline actions or lots of attendance issues that might not make them eligible. Once those have been done, then we set up an interview schedule with our different partners. Our partners come in and conduct interviews at each of the campuses. Students are given at least two to three different interviews depending on how many businesses we have within their academy. Then once they are selected, when school is out, that first week of school is out, we give them a window of time that is about eight weeks for the students to have eighty hours of an internship. Now, what's really unique, or I don't know if it's unique, but what we think is special about our internship program is that students do their internship based on the academy that they've been in. Now, sometimes we have students who will venture outside of their academy based on perhaps some interests or things, and you'll hear some of those tonight, that they just were very interested in a particular internship and they will, they'll go into those. We have a big kickoff luncheon, we invite parents, and we have this big celebration that we begin with. Then they have, within the businesses, they are able then to allow the student to work eighty hours during this eight-week period. Sometimes they do it very quickly and they'll do two weeks of forty hours, or sometimes they spread it out. So that really depends on the business and our students. This also allows our students who are doing dual credit in the summer to kind of work to be able to get those internships in. Then at the end of July, we have a big celebration and each student receives a check for six hundred dollars. Our Human Resources Department is very gracious in that our students are actually employees of Waco ISD. The businesses then pay for their interns. It's considered donation to the district and then we turn around and pay that back to our kids. We do have some nonprofits that take part and some businesses that will offer, perhaps are too small to have a intern and they'll offer to pay an internship. And then we also retain some money over the Korean Technology Budget to help some of our nonprofits to give students those experiences. This is a list of some of how many students we had. We had about a hundred, I think it's, I can't, seven hundred and five students apply for internships this last summer. Seventy-five of them were selected. You can see by academies where those students fell. We had a large number of students who worked within the Education and Training and Arts and AV, lots of different experiences for students. We hope to increase this over the next few years as we grow and our businesses in Waco become more and more involved in wanting to take part. These internships have proved successful for both the business partners and our students, and so we have more businesses that want to take part. This list, as though it's very small, is a list of, I mean, in print, right? Is a list of all the different businesses that took part this year. Want to touch on a few of these that were very exciting for us. We had, for the first time, Royal Manor joined us and our students at Guaca who are brand-new CNAs got to go out and work and we have a student from, that did her internship there. You see on there, we also have Neighbor Works Waco, who's one of our big partners with the new Construction Academy at Guaca. We had a very exciting time when we had students work with the Student Services with Ram and McDurham this summer. They were actually the ones that created the campaign to get the students enrolled and coming back to school. And so we have students that are not only learning about their future careers and ways that they can use what they've learned in their academy, but they're also giving back to our community. We also had Freedom Schools, which took part over at Indian Springs. We had a group of about ten students that took part in Freedom Schools. And it was a great opportunity for them to do that. Child Nutrition had students working with the Summer Feeding Program. We also had Creative Waco, which was a very publicized, and we do have some students from that academy, I mean, that project tonight. They actually painted a mural and we've been told that that's actually going to be refunded again next year. And so it's this, they get to see what it's like to really work in their job. A lot of these students, we try to give them as much real-world experience, but here they are approaching their senior year. They're approaching the time when they're making college decisions or they're making career decisions. What is it I want to do? What is it I want to be? And then we give them a taste of what it might really be like. And so we have students that this makes a difference in their career choices. We've kept some mechanical, we've sent welders out. We've had students changing the brakes on police cars and working on fire engines with the City of Waco. And so our business partners are truly giving our students a taste of what it would be like to work in that career position. As they work through the program, we do have, I do hire teacher mentors that are Korean Technology teachers to go out and talk to the students. Every once in a while, we'll have, you know, the kids have concerns, they, they are learning about how to talk to an employer and so we have those teachers that work with the students. And so very excited about what's happening with this project. So our goals that meet with the governance, Lone Star Governance, is that this summer, it is our goal to increase from seventy-five to ninety interns and then our ultimate goal in twenty would be to have a hundred interns. When we first started this three years ago, we only had twenty-five. And so we really feel like we've come a long way at seventy-five, but really don't want to give up. We want to keep pushing. I think it's great for the students to get to be out and also get to get paid. So, that being said, I want to call up some of our interns. So, join me? I kept telling them, it's almost there, we're almost there, so they're ready to come up. And I want to have them, they're gonna come up and they're gonna give you their name, what school, what academy, where they did their internship, and what, how they benefited. So I'm gonna get all the way and let y'all talk.
My name is Joseph Wozlinski. I'm a student at University High School in the Engineering Academy. I participated in the Creative Waco's Summer Art Prentice ship. And I think the biggest thing that I gained from that experience was, because, you know, in an engineering environment, oftentimes you're working in groups trying to create good ideas together. And so there were processes during that art prentice ship where we were brainstorming ideas for the mural itself. And also, like, in the day-to-day, while painting the mural, like, the small things we do to work together, which is also something you'd kind of experience in an engineering environment when making prototypes or, like, just the teamwork aspect was real big for me.
Good evening. I'm Giselle Castaneda, Iten Waco High School. I am in the Health Science Academy. I did my internship at Royal Manor. I love you so much. And the most thing that I've gained from there is working with my patients and also learning new things in the medical field. And now, after my internship, I got hired from them, so now I work for them.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Perez. I am attending Waco Hiring. I am a senior. My academy is Criminal Justice. I did two internships this summer. I did the Freedom Schools and then I also did Waco Parks and Recreation. I got to ride along with park rangers to see what their job is. It was pretty cool. I learned, I learned the historic of Waco. Also, with the Freedom of Schools, I learned how kids work, really, their enthusiasm and the way they wake up in the morning to come to school, you know? It was really great to see the kids in action with each other and learning from one another as well. But with Waco Parks and Recreation, I did learn, sorry, I get emotional. I did have my own office at Waco Parks and Rec. It provided me a computer to edit my photos. I was a photography over there photographer. And it was really cool and to see everybody in action.
Hello. My name's Tamara Ritchie and I am a senior at Waco High. I am part of the Health Academy and I was a part of the art prentice ship at Creative Waco. First of all, I'd like to say that I hope incoming seniors will take this opportunity because I totally enjoyed it. I never thought I would do anything that dealt with art because I'm not creative at all. Well, not only did we learn stuff in the art department, but we also learned things like skills, long-term skills. First of all, we learned about things about budget and interviews and how first impression means a lot and the way you're dressed up and appearance means a lot. And we also learned that you will have to, if you want to sell your product, you have to get their attention. If they, if you want them to buy, you gotta sell your product. And so I hope other twelfth graders will love it too like I did. Thank you.
And thank you, students, for being here. They were a little anxious. It's kind of hard to talk to a board, but they did an outstanding job. And I think that they're good examples of, these are four of the seventy-five students that took part. Many, many stories, many of the same, so I want to thank them. They did outstanding job tonight. And so with that, I'd like to see if you have any questions about the internship program that I might be able to help you with?
Mr. Manning?
How you doing, ma'am?
I'm doing great.
You said that a hundred and six students applied for only seventy-five. Was there, that they, I guess there's some criteria need to be met and some of them didn't meet the criteria, they didn't have enough jobs?
Both. We had a hundred and five students that made application and were screened by the dis, by the district. We had seventy-five positions for those students. This is just, we kind of tried to recreate that, somewhat of that competition like you would in a workforce. You know, some students, while they have been in the same class and may have learned the same thing, they maybe not, are not presenting themselves. So, so they're learning from that job interview process. You know, it'd be great if we could have every one of them placed and as we move forward, I think that's part of going to the ninety, getting more businesses. We'll begin next week, our meeting, starting those, setting those dates and getting everything started. We recruit for businesses. From the time this is, this summer was over, we start recruiting businesses for next year. We already have had some new folks come on board. We've talked to Baylor's Human Resource Department, looks like we're gonna have some interns there. So we start early on. We have some areas that are harder to fill. The engineering areas, we're looking deeply into those. Automotive, we always have lots of kids in our automotive programs because it's so large. And so some of the students not getting it were, first of all, maybe due to an interview that just didn't fit. And then the other one was not having necessarily enough businesses. But...
But anyway, but that's a learning process.
Right.
Do you go back and try to help those students?
Yes, we do.
These are the areas that you need to improve in the next time around when you do this, right?
Yes, and that's correct. And I would have to tell you one story. It was a girl, the year before last, she did not get an internship. And she sent me an email and it was, Dear Ms. McThethan, I really wanted this internship. You know, I'd like to meet with you personally to know how I can better, how I can do better in the interview. And I met with her and I was extremely charmed by her. I was impressed with her, with her maturity and seeking out to improve herself. I found her an internship because of her approaching me in such an adult manner. I actually found the funds to, you know, because that's the kind of initiative we want our kids to have and getting a job in the future someday. And she's actually going to college and she's doing quite well. So it was just, it was the, this initiative that this young lady put forward that impressed me. But the businesses do select their own intern. This is something, after doing some research and that elusive dissertation that I'm working on is about student internships. And so in the research I've done, we have found that when businesses select their interns, it's a better match for them. Because sometimes it's merely personality that, when we hire people, is there a connection when we're talking to them? And so we do let our businesses, we screen them. However, we let the businesses actually select their interns.
Ms. McThethan?
Yes, sir.
Since we are on an agenda item that discusses the progress measure, which we are at met goal right now. Question about what's next then? How, in order to recruit more interns, get more in the pipeline, more applications, is that a function of business partners stepping forward? Or how are you going to proceed to get more students into the pipeline, so to speak, to match up with those business partners?
Well, first of all, it's a lot of word of mouth. I mean, we've got, now that we have seventy-five that are currently seniors, we'll use them to talk to our, the juniors upcoming, to talk about the importance. Our Korean Technology teachers play a large role in recruiting those students and getting them to step out and say, you know, you can use this particular thing that we're learning today in internship in the summer. Then the businesses also help as well. Businesses, The Chamber helps us with recruiting business partners. Each of our different program areas have business advisory boards. We go to them seeking internship opportunities. So it, that will start in full bloom in January after Christmas. A lot of it is finding that, that little sweet spot where it's the best time to get students to enroll and to get, we got students one year way too soon, so we, we push that data. So we're working on, every year we learn something new, but we will continue really go into full push right after Christmas.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nelson?
I just wanted to add to Mrs. McThethan's comments. One of the most exciting things that we're trying to do is create a pipeline for the next generation of classroom teachers.
Yes.
And so this Freedom School experience that some of our interns had, you know, we're trying to identify juniors that'll work in that in the summer. And to be honest with you, we're looking for some students that we're gonna pay for their undergrad degree. It's like a loan where as long as you teach in WISD, then we're gonna facilitate your college attainment through MCC, Tarleton, Texas Tech, and several other relationships that we're trying to foster. So word of mouth is one way we're doing this. Creating new pathways is another way, but I just, last thing I would say... but I just, last thing I would say is, how, how much goodwill is created in the community? I can't go anywhere without hearing about the work of our interns, and how they say yes, sir, and no, sir, and yes, ma'am, and no, ma'am. I'm not sure if we're teaching them that before they go or not, or...
We are.
Their parents taught them that before they left, or how, I don't know. But I'm just so proud, as I sat here and listened to how sharp they are, and the fact that, that, you know, Royal Manor's already hired one. We created another pathway with the City of Waco this year in the Water Department, where they're trying to hire people straight out of high school to go to work in the Water Department. So, there's a standard, and it's competitive, and, you know, there's some hoops that have to be jumped through, but I believe our kids will be very responsive to new pathways, and really just being good ambassadors of the school district.
And I thank you for those words. I will tell you, at Royal Manor, that was our first time to have interns there. The head of nursing, the head, the manager said, they have never had, from colleges or any other high school in the area, such well-prepared interns, that they came in and they had better habits than some of their employees. So, you know, we, we were very proud of that. You know, you get all teary sometimes when you, when you hear about these things, and so, I'm very proud of the kids, and thank you for your kind words, Dr. Nelson, and I agree with you, it's, they're ambassadors for the district, and they really put a wonderful face in our community, so thank you for those.
Thank you, Ms. McThethan. And congratulations to the students. On behalf of the board, we applaud your achievement and your accomplishments. The thing that I would hope would be that, and you can address this after the meeting, because we're almost through our agenda this evening, I'd be interested in how you're gonna leverage this experience into the future, you know, what your plans are in the future. So, I'd be happy for you to share that after the meeting, or whatever. So, but, very, very good success that you've achieved, and we're very proud of you, and we wish you the best success going in the future, and we'd like to hear about that success.
Mm-hmm.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McThethan. Okay, that concludes our agenda. We're item, we're on to item 13, Announcements. Mr. DeBeere?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. There are four things I'd like to highlight between now and our next board meeting, beginning with Monday, when the lottery for enrollment at Lake Air Montessori Magnet School and Hillcrest Professional Development School opens up. These are two great campuses that give really unique opportunities for an education to our students, and unique choices to the parents in our community. Lake Air is not only the largest Montessori school in the state, but has really become a model for public Montessori schools in Texas and around the country. And the partnership at Hillcrest between Baylor University and Waco ISD has been nationally recognized as a model as well. All the information about that enrollment lottery will be available on our website Monday morning, and that lottery window is open until January 25th. Then on Tuesday, we get to celebrate the incredible teachers from all across our district, who day in and day out are working to make sure that our students are successful. At 6:30 PM, we have a special ceremony for those outstanding teachers at University High School, followed by a reception, and we would invite all of you and members of the public to join us in celebrating the people who really do make Waco ISD's classrooms transformative experiences for our kids. The following day, we have another type of celebration. This one's a celebration of the incredible partnerships that are shaping early childhood experiences in our community. At Alta Vista Elementary School, we'll be holding a ribbon cutting for the Inspiracion Program at that campus, which is a partnership between Inspiracion, Prosper Waco, Waco ISD, and Transformation Waco. And immediately following that, in the park next to Alta Vista, our partners at the United Way will hold a second ribbon cutting for their Bourne Learning Trail in that park, which is just a great enrichment experience for young children and families with young children in our community. And then finally, starting on Thursday and running through Sunday, we have the performances of Pippin at Waco High School. Everything that we've heard about the rehearsals for this musical indicate that it's gonna be a great, incredibly entertaining experience. There are performances, December 6th through the 8th at 7:00 PM, and again, at 2:30 PM on December 8th and 9th. Tickets are just $15, and we hope that the community will come out and see just the incredible talent that our students have. So, it's, it's a busy few weeks as we head to the next board meeting and toward winter break, but a lot of really exciting celebrations happening around our district.
Mr. DeBeere? Is there any other items? Need to come before the board?
No, sir.
Okay, well, and just to conclude then, we do hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving last week, and had a lot of rest, because we've got a, a busy December facing us with more holidays. So, we appreciate everybody being with us this evening, and hope you did have a successful holiday with family. So, at this time, there's no other agenda items, we will stand adjourned.